Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Okay, approval of agenda. Is there anyone at this time who want to add or delete table something? Seeing that no one wants to make a change here, may I have a motion?
My motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Beal.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Okay. At this time, is there anyone who wishes to address the board in a public presentation? Seeing that there is none, we will move forward. Again, we are change agents. We have our hands on hope and we are united purpose in mind to serve our children and our community. And it's an honor to be a school board member. So, thank you and thank you for all that you do for this district. So, first is our reports. So, Miriam.
Yeah, well, before I get into our successes and challenges, do y'all have any questions regarding my board report?
I'm just jealous you got to go.
I do have to throw out there, Tanya, I don't know why your board report didn't make it into the packet because you weren't the first person to turn it in.
It had to do with the internet issues.
Just so you guys know, she was not slacking.
Oh.
Okay. So, some possible increased funding from the School Health Professional Grant. I did find out today, it was an error, they sent us $63,000 more than was the actual award, however, they don't want us to send the money back.
Man. That's the important piece.
Yes. And so, we already had created a budget that was much larger than what we were actually awarded. So, we will go ahead and send folks to a couple of conferences on counseling, include some additional professional development opportunities for our counselors, and we will go ahead and purchase those biofeedback devices and the program. So, we'll have enough money to get those things accomplished prior to the new funding period beginning. A lot of partnerships happening, really just, you know, still people are reaching out wanting to work with the district and hearing great things from folks. So, I know Tanya's, you know, had new lot getting ahold of her and Dan, you know, you've had a bunch of people reaching out recently, so a lot of neat, neat things that are coming our way because of these partnerships. Just a shout out to Dan and his American Literature class. He invited me to be a part of their visual book report, kind of. They created these amazing posters that really told the story of Catcher in the Rye and, you know, it allowed me to ask them some questions and have them think deeply about the stuff. It was just really, it was a great, great project, very well done. And also, shout out to Mrs. Copley who's taken a lead on getting the gymnasium and the dedication of the gymnasium for CK underway. Challenges, this time of year, it's the school closures, really. We're out of snow days, right? We've got testing, state testing right around the corner. We're in crunch time and the weather's been so unpredictable this year. We've been, I mean, you guys know, like, when it snows, it snows. Yeah, and, and I think that is one of the most nerve-wracking parts of this job, is calling snow days.
Welcome to spring in Purple Creek.
We've had eight feet since the first of February.
Eight since the first of February.
Now, we're in the town.
Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Dan.
All right. Another short and sweet report from me. Did you guys have any questions? We're going to talk about the successes and the challenges.
Go forward.
All right. Successes, we are doing in terms of some prep work for CMAS and WEA after some pretty extensive data analysis. We decided that, you know, last year, we really emphasized putting responsibility in the hands of the students with a, kind of like a gung-ho, here's why we're doing it, and we saw our scores dramatically increase with that. This year, we're focused on trying to increase the achievement portion, not just the participation and improvement portion. And with that data analysis, we're really focused on fractions. For whatever reason, our students really struggle with fractions all the way through school. So, we're doing three weeks of pretty intense fraction focus in every single class. They're doing fraction work with their teachers that started last week, this week, and next week when we get to CMAS and WEA. And, you know, just looking at those numbers, I think if we can, if we can improve their scores in the fraction sections, their, their achievement scores in math are going to go pretty dramatically up. So, we'll see. Kind of a gamble, but it's, it's a very focused, like, we're trying to use a scalpel instead of an hand grenade on this one. If everybody gets good at fractions and everybody has that, they raise that one part of their math scores up, I think, I think they're going to do well. So, I'm excited about that. Also, really happy about the way the community rallied to help us after the snowstorm. You know, various community members show up. Erin from Purple Creek Automotive and Earthworks came over and brought their, their stuff out. You know, it was, it was a good couple days' work just to get it all back again, to be able to see the results out there. But really excited about the way the community and our own maintenance crew, you know, spending their entire weekend basically trying to make this school able to open. So, really happy about that. Terms of challenges, same thing. I have a couple of open positions, a position for a dean and a position for a teacher. We don't have many applications for those, so I'm always, I'm always looking for that. You know, if we can, you know, anybody that's interested in trying out of school, I'd love to see if you have applications for that. Other than that, you know, it's a pretty, pretty standard next eight weeks. I see where we're going and I hope we get there pretty quickly. Any other questions?
Tanya, you're up.
So, I'm guessing you all probably don't have too many questions on mine since you just got it. Sounds planned, doesn't it? The biggest thing, you know, the successes, Missoula Children's Theater, there were 27 kids in our district participating of... Okay, that's not right. Six Crescent students, that is not correct. Six.
No, six.
No, there's seven CCB students. The six is, six kiddos that are not attending school here but are living within our district that, that participated. So, they, because the Hugue Foundation opened it to anyone living within our district. So, the six is not six Crescent, but six out of district or non-attending students. Challenges, snow. It finally has stopped leaking inside the building, so that's good. Ian was able to put the building back together and put all the ceiling panels back in place over spring break. That was a great thing. And I wanted to tell you that although Miriam was talking about how it is very challenging about whether or not to call a snow day and you always have a parent who is upset that you called a snow day, I also had a parent who contacted me privately past student of ours and said, "How can I help? I can get other parents to come help too." So, at that point, we didn't, you know, we didn't really have a place to have the help, but it was, you know, kind of a shot in the arm to know that we have a parent that said, "That's gotta be a lot of work, how can we help?" So, that was really nice. The comment, most of our conferences have been rescheduled. Some of them have been after school, some of them have been during planning time, some of them are taking time on our professional development day, Friday, but there is a very strong feeling in the elementary school that it's also our job to help educate the parents and on, on how to navigate this school life. So, most of our teachers prefer to do them in person. So, we had some that were virtual through parent initiative, but most of them are, are wait to be in person.
Any questions for Tanya? Other reports? Anyone?
Mine's pretty short. We have, we still are looking for two infant and toddler teachers. I did do a couple interviews. I was at a girl that's been an infant toddler leading teacher in Iowa and she's hoping to be here in April sometime, so that would be amazing. That would help with our enrollment, so. Other than that, we're just getting along. The parent-teacher conferences, our teachers did the two before and after school and still it's been working on them. Most of them have been done and, and done it personally, so that's been nice to have the parents be able to come in and actually talk with the teachers versus.
Other reports.
I have a question. So, do we have insurance that covers all the food that was lost? Like the restaurant does sometimes?
Insurance that covers the lost food? I'm going to check in on that.
Because grocery stores do and restaurants do.
Yeah, yeah. And we just got through the numbers and it's over $6,000.
Yeah, that's a lot.
It is a lot. So, we're hoping for some reimbursement through the county.
Oh, good. I was going to ask about that.
Yeah. But we'll see if there are insurance as well.
Yeah, that was just a mind-blowing amount of food.
Thanks for bringing that up.
And then, Dan, I have one question. I thoroughly enjoyed working with Miss Peak. She is stellar. But I'd really like us to look at other publishers to see if we can get a better deal, because that's a lot of money.
Sure.
And I told her I'd be happy to help her to do a side-by-side or something on it, but she was stellar to work with and that class was outstanding.
And usually, those decisions were made in the spring, so that is something that she stepped into.
Good. Yeah, good, cool. That's it, I'm done. We can go now.
Okay, then moving on. We will go then to new business. So, under that is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Beal.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Conley. Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Stope.
Okay, and moving past that then, is the approval of March 2024 payables and payroll.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 2024 payables and payroll.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Beal.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Stope.
Okay, and next, we have the audit report. So, Tom, please remain seated and give us the news.
Will do. Y'all have this sheet I just passed out. It's not as long as what my notes in front of me, but enough so that you can follow along. And, you know, the audit is, is really going to be successes and challenges as well, my report would be. And so, starting with the successes, the, the audit was on time this year. That's, that's a big success. The last two years, it was quite, quite late and, and you had tax money withheld by the county treasurer. This year, it was on time. So, thank you to Elaine and to, to everybody that made that possible. And then also, it's an unmodified or clean opinion this year. Now, that's expected each year, but that was not the case last year. We disclaimed an opinion on significant, significant parts of the audit. So, that is a big, big deal to, to get back over that hump and to have a clean opinion. But there's plenty of challenges, mostly because by the time we presented the audit and we're, we're winding down, it was about time for the next audit. So, there was little time to turn around and change things. So, we'll, we'll see that, that many of the, the challenges that we had, the findings that we had and, and as well as the recommendations are going to be pretty similar to last year. But I'll also be able to, to note, you know, particularly with the recommendations, where, where some of these things have been at least put into process or being worked on. So, so first of all, you know, challenges getting, getting through the audit. We, we had hoped with the hiring or, or the contracting with a third party to, to assist, that that would clean things up a little bit more. And, and her scope unfortunately was a lot smaller than, than we had expected. I, I think, and, and was later than we hoped, but it, but it was also the challenge of contracting with, with her at a late date. So, basically, she was working, this Linda Warho was working concurrently with us. So much wasn't ready to be audited when we were on site too. In the end though, she did get through the bulk of the, the bulk of the bank reconciliations for the, for the general fund. So, she really just did the general fund bank reconciliations. I say just, but it was also going through all of the transactions in your most significant bank account, unwinding those and getting bank reconciliations done for each one. So, that, that was a big deal. But at the same time, we still had quite a bit of work that we had hoped would be done before we got here, that we ended up having to do the legwork on. So, it just took, took more time on our, on our end to do that. And, and again, with the bank reconciliations, as, as in the, the two prior years, they hadn't been done at all during the year. So, those bank reconciliations getting done, it was all being done, you know, well after the year. Yeah, yeah. So, and of course, it's, it's, what that results in is, is lack of timely information, a difficulty of, if there's errors, it's, it's difficult for Miriam or the board or anybody else to, to get current information and take action if, if action is needed. But again, this is, this is similar to last year and, and hope will be improved going forward. We did have a number of findings. All of our findings from, from last year were still the case for, for 2023. You know, appropriate closing procedures, bank reconciliations, appropriate segregation of duties, having the correct basis for the grants fund, although that's not uncommon with a, with a relatively small district, just having that, that expertise in place. Misstatement of inter-fund balances, so there was a lot of entries. So, so inter-funds are basically loans between funds, all right? Usually, it's the general fund, loans or timing differences, I should say. It's monies that are in the general fund that are for another fund. And those didn't balance, they should all balance to zero, so that took a little work hunting those down. The, the couple of new ones this year were a, a lack of control over grant cash management. And, and we talked about this at our meeting, meeting a couple months ago as, you know, kind of the initial things we were finding, pardon me, and, and that was Head Start funds being requested before the earning process had been completed. And as a reminder, you, you earn your revenue when you spend the allowed funds or when you spend on allowed activities. And, and I suspect that happened as, as, as Tammy was submitting things last year, as she was trying to cover shortfalls in, in the property tax revenue being withheld. You still can't do that, but I, I just guess that was, that was the reason why. And, and I know Elaine is well aware of this and, and has been working with Head Start to get that sorted out, sorted out appropriately. The, the other finding is very similar to this one, it's, it really is virtually the same thing, but it's, it's a lack of control over reporting for Head Start. And that's because the reports weren't correct because the expenditures weren't correct. So, so they kind of go hand in hand with each other. Financial statement findings, so this is just kind of general overall for the financial statements. Again, the financial condition of the district is, is strong, but there, there are some issues similar to last year that we see. One is cash with county treasurer was about $3.2 million higher than last year, and that's because they weren't, they, they, that's receivable. That's where they were holding your money, not giving it to you for those issues there. So, not a surprise there. And then, this will sound a little bit like a contradiction, but intergovernmental grants receivable were also up. And, and last year, we noticed, noted that as, as grants not being requested timely. So, we had some grants that were not being requested in a reasonable amount of time. And then we had other grants, the Head Start grants that were being requested too soon. So, so those are, those are, that's kind of the story there. Recommendations, again, my, my recommendations are similar to last year, but I'll, I'll know where, I know you're working on some things. First, that the board and superintendent consider the, whether the finance department is properly staffed. And I know you're working on permanent positions or maybe assistance from a, a third party to come in. And I, I, you know, heard some of those inner workings going on, which is great. Prior year, you know, I noted a third party coming in last year to assist with things. And, and that took the form of Linda. I think at the time, we had talked about, you know, do you bring somebody in to just get the next year right? Do you bring somebody in to do that, but also go back and look at the prior year? And, and what was landed on was bringing Linda in to do 2023 and hope something might come to light. But the prior year stuff, you know, that, that's kind of what was landed on, didn't go back to the prior year stuff. We suspect that those prior year differences were likely related, related to payroll-related items. We just don't know. So, I know, I, I think, Donna, you had maybe asked about a forensic audit, and that's more or less one of the options I mentioned last year. I mean, it's getting farther away. It certainly could be done, but we're two years removed now from the data.
It's not just for that point, it's for the, where's the mystery?
Absolutely, yeah.
How do you just like?
Understand. Yeah, and one, that's the very reason why we disclaimed an opinion, because we couldn't figure it out. Again, we suspect it's payroll and benefits related, but we don't know for sure. You know, making sure your finance, the staff, the staff is appropriately trained, board and superintendent monitoring activities more, and I know that stepped up, as well as the, the, the board and, and superintendent being even more involved in the audit process. And that, that was key this year. I think that, that made a big difference that, that one, we met face-to-face for an hour or so while we were here during, during the fieldwork. I met with Mary and I met with Stan, and we just kind of went over how things were going, also talked about, you know, plans for, what do things look like going forward? And, and also, monthly kind of touch-ins or what have you, meetings were scheduled with the board so that you all were at least as, as aware as you could be with, with where things stood. And, you know, I think because of those additional communications, that push was there that, that got this in on time, which is certainly a success. So, moving on to number two. Moving on to number two, so, so now, at, at this point, I'm kind of doing my, doing my normal presentation and highlights here. And, and we'll talk about the government-wide versus the fund financial, fund financial statements. So, the fund statements, you have two presentations within your statements, government-wide and funds. The fund statements reflect how you keep your books on a day-to-day basis. Reports to the board, budgets are based on that fund presentation. The government-wide statements take all your funds and combine them into a, into a single presentation and, and are presented on the accrual basis, all right? So, they, that brings in capital assets, debt, other long-term liabilities that aren't included within the fund statements, okay? So, so number three here is the statement of net position. This is a government-wide financial statement. And so, touching just on a few things, because we've kind of talked about them, or at least they track cash investments down about 2.8 million, and that's really just because the withholdings from, primarily the withholdings from the county treasurer. Net pension and OPEB liabilities total $13.6 million this year. That's double since the prior year. And if you recall from prior presentations, that is the triple-proportionate share of Para's unfunded liability, okay? And so, every Para-participating school or district has to now, for the last 10 years, has had to record your share of that big liability. Well, that liability doubled for everybody last year based on changing actuarial assumptions and that sort of thing. So, it, it also, if you look at the, the statement of activities, which essentially is the income statement or the government-wide statements, that changed greatly because a lot of that was booked there. So, anyway, that, that piece was up. Also, long-term debt was up with $2.6 million in new loans. And overall, net position, net position or equity for the government-wide statements up $675,000. Getting into more familiar territory and looking at the general fund, I mentioned the financial position of the, the district is, is strong, and this kind of indicates that where your ratio of unassigned fund balance to expenses, you can cover 207 days of expenses. We like to see, it's nice to see 90 to 120, and you're quite a bit more than that. So, that's a, a good sign of financial health with the general fund. I mentioned long-term liabilities already. Bonds and bond debt service was paid per debt service schedules, and then you have the new loans. I'll highlight just a few things for the, with the funds. So, the general fund fund balance was up. So the general fund fund balance was up $372,000 for the year. That's comprised of revenues being up about 9.2%, primarily due to increases in state funding and federal funding as well. And then expenses were up 26.3%, which sounds pretty terrible, but it, it tracked well and still resulted in an increase in, in fund balance. And, and those expenses, by the way, that, that large number, a, a good part of that is going to be related to one with the 1.8 million dollars in, in spending in the building fund. So you can see how that can change things very quickly if, you know, if, where you have relatively, relatively small balance. Food service fund balance was down $165,000. And that's something to look at going into the current year, because that did result in a negative fund balance and, and needs to be something corrected, probably by a transfer for the general fund or kids eating a lot more pizza. Federal grants were up $120,000 for the year. The activity for the year. And then Head Start activities were down about $338,000. Probably would be less than that, again, if, if those monies had been earned and not moved out of those areas there. And then I mentioned the capital projects fund. That fund balance was down $576,000, but that's mostly related to the $1.8 million spent on capital projects. So, so again, in closing, the, with the audit challenges and, and findings, while they're serious, I'm happy to know that the board, it was great that the board was aware of them and could start addressing them and, and knowing, really knowing what's going on there and, and, and working towards improvement. I know that you all have looked at various staffing options or potentially bringing in a, a third-party company to, to help with the monthly and year-end flows. And I definitely support something, something like that. And, you know, with appropriate staffing and controls in place, you know, the community is really going to see clear improvement, I have no doubt. And then last, I just want to express my appreciation to you, Miriam, for helping push this across the finish line, to Elaine for stepping into her role and kind of keeping things on track when there wasn't somebody keep things on track. Just, just fantastic. And, and really appreciate just everybody's assistance with the audit, getting it done at least in February and not in September.
Here, here.
And so Tom, just so you're aware, we did, the board did approve the contract with K-12 Accounting. Their actual official start date was today, April 1st. So, yeah, we're working with Charlotte Lindeman to get her the information that she needs, get names transferred over.
I couldn't be more thrilled. That's your best solution.
I think so.
Yeah, that's your best solution. We, first, we worked with Charlotte for a couple of years when she was over at, she was at Whitefield School District. And, but now, now she's working with K-12. We've worked with her at Custer County School District. And again, didn't know how that was going to go with her, with her first time through dealing with that, getting all the filings. And it was fantastic. It, it went really, really well that she was able to get on top of things as, as quickly as she was. And getting the support from the rest of the company there. So that's, that's fantastic news.
We hope so, too.
So I, I had a question.
Yes.
You said the, the new issues. So lack of control with the grants in terms of cash management. And then related to that, lack of control over reporting.
Correct.
So are these grants then their cost-based reimbursement?
Yes.
And so when it is out of that scope and sequence, that's when we get in trouble?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. So, so what happened was, is that it was, the monies were requested really without support from the expenditures. All right? So the cash management piece is, is getting the cash too soon before you'd earned it. And then the reporting piece is because we reversed those, those amounts that shouldn't have been booked or shouldn't have been booked as revenue, there is a reporting issue because it was reported as being accurate expenses.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Is that, and Elaine, is that your saying due to and due from?
No, that's, that's different from that entirely. That's just in Head Start. And I work with Marilyn Cormino, who is our financial person with Head Start. And she walked me through doing a reversing entry to back out the cash. And basically, we're booking that to deferred revenue. And then getting the, balancing it out with another one where we're requesting funds this year, but we're backing out last year's one. So we're getting less money, but we're reconciling to the amount we should have.
So basically requesting money without receipts to back it up.
There was, yes. And in some instances, not requesting funds from grants, right? Those reimbursement funds, even though the money was spent, so.
Yeah, so you have the money and you will get the revenue this year, but you won't get more money for it with, with backing out the prior year amounts.
Can you explain the deferred inflows to me? I don't understand that.
Yes. So, so deferred inflows are, just to be honest, convoluted governmental accounting. Okay? But the simplest way to put it.
No surprise.
The simplest way to put it is deferred inflows will, are not yet revenue, but will be. And deferred outflows are not yet expenses, but will be. All right? So.
That didn't, that was clear as mud.
Well, I was hoping you'd be a little clearer.
No, I, I understand the concept. My, my question is, is why the big difference between 2022 and 2023?
Yeah, so much of that is related to the, to the para, to, to the indigenous para life. So remember, I said that about doubled. That went up by more than $7 million. So normally, under most accrual accounting, you would, you would book debt $7 million as an expense. Right? But because much of it is based on the actuarial studies and that sort of thing, the way that auditing standards, how, how you address that is to amortize that difference over time. So that expense or that future revenue is getting amortized over four or five years rather than getting all at once. So that's what would drive those numbers.
So basically what happened here is it caught up with us.
Yeah.
Okay. I wonder.
Do you have trouble sleeping now?
No way.
My head would hurt every night.
I, I, I just got back from a vacation on a very uncomfortable bed. I slept with a baby last night, so.
Oh, isn't that the best?
It's not away from the hourly rate model, so.
Yes.
I just think of that, that saying counting sheep. I mean, this gets way beyond that.
Yes.
I have the three o'clock and the, oh, forgot this.
Anyway, well, thanks so much. We appreciate your efforts on our behalf and our children and our community.
You bet.
And your company.
And good for y'all, getting together with K-12 Accounting. I think you're going to be very happy.
Yes.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's going to be a little bit of a slog the first few months. There's, there's going to be a bit digging out and they've got, what are they, April 1st, April, May, June. You got three months, and then I guess probably another two or three months before the actual audit. But they've got a lot of stuff to get on top of, too, but.
We're lucky that Elaine is going to help with it.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And Kathy. And Kathy, too.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Kathy's played a huge role in that.
Yeah.
Very much.
Well, thanks. Drive safe.
Thank you so much.
Yes, oh, yeah. Take a cookie.
Take one and take an extra in case you go into ditch.
Huh?
Oh, wow, the cookie's disgusting.
Okay. Okay, moving on then. So. The next is our second and final reading. And so you want to go through that, Miriam or Donna? Oh, we do? Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. I fast-forwarded that. So may I have a motion then to accept the audit report?
I'll make a motion to accept the audit report.
A second.
Okay, roll call.
Yeez.
Aye.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Rain.
Aye.
Okay, now we can get to that.
Okay, so if I could do this on the audit.
Okay, go forward.
Okay. Second and final reading of, be careful, of E-B-C-E, school closings and cancellations, F policies for revision, F-B facilities planning, F-B dash R facilities planning, F-B-C dash prioritization of facilities improvement, F-B-C dash R prioritization of facilities improvement, F-D facilities funding, F-D-A bond campaigns, F policies for removal, F-A facilities development goals, priority objectives, F-E-A educational specifications, F-E-F-B contractors affidavits and guarantees, F-E-G construction contracts bidding and awards.
Okay.
I have a question on that. Since I wasn't here for the first reading, I'm going to allow him to vote on the second reading.
Yes.
And Kathy.
Okay. So I, may I have a motion?
I move that we approve as stated.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Yeez.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Rain.
Aye.
Okay, next up is approval of Head Start continuation grant.
I'd like to make, make the motion to approve the continuation grant for Head Start.
Second?
Aye.
Okay, roll call.
Yeez.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is informational items, BOSI's update. Donna, Brazil.
Our last meeting was quite lengthy, like three hours lengthy. And I have to meet with Miriam on some items. And then apparently there's a special appearance meeting here on the 16th of April?
Well, I, I invited them to join us for, you know, an event that we're already having.
Well, because the, because the directive from the board is for her to be doing outreach meetings. And so they did Willam Park, I think.
Yeah.
And then it's our turn.
Yeah.
But I don't know when it is.
I mean, I encouraged them to attend events that we're always having, like our letter of D and our map and fines, right? But, yeah, so then they're going to host one year.
Do we know then? 16th sometime?
Yeah. I don't know the exact time.
Okay. Because I kind of want to go be there.
I'll find, I'll find out.
Um, April 16th. April 16th. I assume it's an evening thing?
I need to check.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't have a time on that. But I think it's good because it gives parents a chance to get questions answered in a less threatening environment than just a one-on-one with the staff. So anyway, that's what's going on in our world, the BOSIs.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then next up is attended events.
Any events that you all are planning on attending between now and the next board meeting?
I think it's the secret party.
Okay.
The secret party.
Oh.
That, that is going on.
Okay, and so do we know when the secret party is?
It's on the 20th, 20th.
Okay, and then we also have the carnival.
25th.
Yes, on April 25th.
So the secret meeting, and I imagine we'll get some information about that.
Yes.
You hope, yeah.
And we hope that the board will come to the carnival on the evening of April 25th. It begins at 4:15, it ends at 6:00. We'd love for you guys to, to run one of the carnival games. I'll be baking spaghetti and.
Are you doing spaghetti? Do you need help in the kitchen?
No, I got it.
What was the date, Miriam?
April 25th, from 4:15 to 6:00 p.m.
And the other one is April 20th.
And it's legal to help kids cheat so they win.
Oh, God. Okay.
And you're down to do the fish thing.
Always.
You can.
Okay. Next is the accounting audit updates. Elaine?
Well, I think Tom went over, you know, we have our, our audit has been filed. I am working on reconciling the accounts. I am up to November in the general fund, still running into issues of having had the vendor in for employee, employee benefits. So for para, like state tax, IRS tax, there was no vendor in, so you got to recreate what payment you paid, which sometimes is very challenging. And then reconcile anything else because as we have gone along, Kathy and I have both found that in payroll, and where he was talking about these payroll issues, we are charging the expense to Head Start and to, say, the, that will grant fund. We're charging them, but it's still all being paid out of the general fund. So for Head Start, that's a problem because they have their own bank account. So say, somebody has an American fidelity expense that they're contributing to, well, it, it expenses to Head Start, but it's being paid from the general fund. And almost all of the payroll liabilities are doing that. So there's a, and this is where that due-to, due-from comes in, where there's supposed to be a check and a balance. So if we write a check, Head Start's supposed to pay us back. But if you don't know that that is going on, then that's where you're going to be in trouble. We always knew that payroll and the IRS withholding payment was always paid by the general fund, and we would write a check every month for Head Start to pay us back. Well, in the past, just blanket amounts were deducted. So it didn't reconcile to what that monthly amount was. It was just a dollar amount. And I think that's probably where a lot of the money is missing from, is because we keep finding more and more things that the district paid for that.
So can any way to keep a running tally of that?
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. And so I noticed that in this system, the due-to, due-from is not working correctly. Everything is dumping into one account number. It doesn't balance out by being paid out of another account number, and you cannot override it. The system automatically is putting that, that account number in there. And so I contacted our third-party vendor, and she's supposed to be checking for me to see what, if we return that off and do it manually, if we could correct the problem ourselves, that from here going forward. But she's, she hasn't gotten back. And I talked to her today, and she's still looking at how that would affect payroll.
Oh, that could be a problem.
It could be a big problem.
Yeah.
So, but just in keeping a tally, you know, it, it averages sometimes $40,000 to $50,000 a month that we're paying for Head Start. You take that by 12 months.
There's your 600.
600, wow.
So then, two questions. Is this money, can we recover this?
We can't, you know, as long as we do it before January, you know, we don't have to take that transfer. So I'm trying to go through everything and, you know, Tom and Jesse, the auditors, have given me this sheet. They said, well, just, you know, journal it this way, but the system will not let me journal it that way.
So it was said that again, that. So it was said that again, that Head Start is a zero-sum balance.
Yes.
In terms of their operating model, and they have 300,000 in in savings. So if we, can we go back and recover that? That entire amount?
The 300,000?
No, well, if you're saying.
You're not going to hit the 600 because Tom's already written that off.
Okay, because I'm thinking, so you're only going to be able to recover through one budget period, but you're saying that's 40,000 to 50,000 a month, which would be, what, 500,000?
600,000.
600,000 for the year. Okay, okay, well, I'd be satisfied with that. Then then my.
Now, Kathy did make transfers, but like I said, she just did a blanket amount. I mean, I mean, in July, she did 50,000 and a 60,000. Then in August, she did another 40,000, but it doesn't reconcile to anything. So now we've got, what, 150,000 that we've taken out in two months? Well, they never spent 150,000 in two months. You know, may at the most, they would have spent maybe 100,000. So we we took 50,000 more than.
What needed.
We what we needed, right. Well, then she didn't take anything for September, nothing for October. Then in November, she took 75,000. And and it was just about the time I came on and I asked her, did you, have you done any other rework, transfers? And she said she had only done the two, the 50,000 and the 60,000.
And then surprise.
So I reconciled to where we should be, and I made almost an $85,000 transfer. Only to find out that she had transferred that 75,000 and that 40,000 that she didn't tell me about.
Okay, so then the forensic audit.
Yeah, so one of the firms that I reached out to, they don't do that. I contacted five companies in total. I'm not really hearing back from them. I'm nervous because their response is, you know, it's like, if we're paying you this amount of money for a forensic audit, will you definitely be able to tell where the discrepancy lies? Maybe. And so I'm, I, you know, I think, is it something that will be uncovered, can be uncovered in-house? Do we pay $40,000 to them? What if they don't? I don't know. I don't know.
So there's a company called Robert Half. Have you contacted them?
No.
Okay, they're out of Colorado Springs. They do everything financially.
Robert.
Robert Half, like half, yeah, like half a quart of milk.
Okay, okay. Sure, I'll reach out to them, too.
So Elaine said that if Tom already wrote it off, we won't get it back. Is that, unless we can find where it's at, or?
It's not in this in this fiscal period anymore, so.
Oh, okay.
We we can't, we can say, oh, this is what it was, but no, we can't recover it now. We're in a new fiscal year.
Okay, to be continued.
I think it's still worth taking that.
Find out where it's at.
I'm also wondering if if some of the people involved in this, I wonder if they have trouble sleeping at night.
No, I do.
Okay, anything else, Elaine?
No, you know, we're just, we're meeting with Charlotte, who is going to be the business manager on record from K-12 accounting. She'll be in, I think it's Wednesday. Wednesday. And she's going to try to work out the budget for next year, working on that because that's coming up rapidly. And we're working on getting her access to the software system and the other things that she'll need access to. Other than that, we're also meeting with the software company. On the 9th, they're going to do a hand so, handoff client meeting with us on the 9th to start getting the new software, where we're going to have what they're going to need and what we're going to have to do to get the new software. And I will be suggesting that we have a budget work session sometime in probably the third week of April, but we don't need to, I really want to speak to Charlotte first and ask her what is a feasible timeframe for her to present a preliminary budget to you all, and then we can have that work session. So just keep that in mind, that you'll be hearing from me about that.
So I have this idea that just came to me. I mean, again, I appreciate Elaine and Kathy, and again, Miriam, how hard you've worked to get this out of where it was, and it is moving solidly forward. So my thing is, is maybe I could figure out who could do me a brass dollar bill or something and and put your names on it and then put it in the pocket of the pioneer on our sculpture out here. We could weld it there.
That one's worth photographing, that's.
Really? I mean, who else would have thought about that? And then you'd be in perpetuity. I think it's better than trying to bronze your shoe.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Don't you think?
Only if we can get Kathy's face in the middle of the bill and.
Okay, okay. Well, we're going to work on this, okay.
I'm surprised they all still have their hair on their head.
Okay.
Just just so you guys know, and I'll include this on every agenda, February's revenue for the 1% sales tax, 64,179,746. Yeah, so we're we're in a really good place. The cost of the career and technical ed programs as a whole, including salaries, thank you Kathy for getting that for me, is running about $300,000 a year, so we'll be fine. Yeah, so.
And it costs us $434.
It's better than pocket change, that's for sure.
Yeah, awesome.
And we're we're going to have the gym dedication during Crescent Days on May 23rd, which you all are going to be here, community's going to be here, families are going to be here, food's going to be available, so.
I got my crew.
It's a smart thing to have it, so. I'll get with you, Miriam, how maybe to help spread the word and get invitations out.
Yeah, because again, I'm thinking about Rodney's family, and they're they're going to come for the celebration of life on the 15th. But maybe somebody from Kalispell could show up.
Yeah.
But then also the Beals' family, they they need to know we have the that Beals' party, that they would be in representation. Yes, I'd be glad to help. Okay.
I have my barbecue ready. The whole crew, we're ready.
I just, is it this gym in here that?
No, it'll be Crescent.
Okay, that's where I was wanting, I couldn't figure how it would.
This one was designated to Tim Bertrand.
Right, so I was just trying to.
The CK Memorial Gymnasium.
Any other concerns from the board?
I just have one comment to make if I can. I want to express my appreciation for the fine work Donna has been doing on the yearbook this year.
Yes.
So I just want to put that on record.
I'll tell you what, dream team. Let me just say.
Oh, she collects money like a bear, I'm telling you. She knows how.
We're, we collected more than we need, than we are going to lose. You were. I was the rolodex, the kids did the work. Yeah, it was great, much work done.
Thank you, Tom.
And they want to do a really cool thing for Donkey Derby Days that I think would be a great interface with the community and the visitors. They want to have a booth at Donkey Derby Days, and they want to ask the advertisers if they can sell their merch at the town. Isn't that a good idea?
Yeah.
I think that's a good time.
We'll see.
And a shout out to Merrill because with the snowstorm came power outages, as we know, but that also meant that our entire network went down, our Wi-Fi, and it was for days after we came back to school.
I offered her a pair of scissors to fix the broadband.
I know.
But she wouldn't take it.
A great attitude, right? Did what she had to do, got the work done, even with everyone like standing around. How cool.
This has got to be a record, at least by four minutes, so may I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Yeez.
Aye.
Brazil. Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Rain.
Aye.
Stokes.
Okay, we're.